The League of Women Voters, Champlin Women of Today, Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and the North Suburban Optimists Club all welcome you to meet the candidates for those running for Champlin City Council Ward 3. If you live in Ward 3 and are voting in person on Election Day, your polling place is Servant of Christ Church. Thanks to the candidates, Champlin City Hall, and QCTV for making this event possible. This year, League of Women Voters Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area is holding our Meet the Candidate forums without an audience to prevent COVID spread. I'm Linda Rogers, co-chair of Voter Service for the Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area League of Women Voters, and I live in Anoka, so I can't vote for either of these candidates. Helping us time tonight is Wendy Hamjak, and she's from Champlin Women of Today. Thanks Wendy. All candidates for this race, all two of them, were invited to participate in this forum. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates for office. We're sure that these candidates care very much who you vote for, but the League does not care. The League does care and hope that each of you simply will vote. The goal of our forums is to help citizens become informed voters. The candidates for Champlin Ward 3 City Council are Jack Joa and Nate Trusdale. We'll begin with three questions that were provided to the candidates in advance. Those questions help you get to know the candidates a little bit. Then this will be followed by questions submitted online. Candidates will alternate who answer these questions first, and answers are limited to one minute. We'll begin with Jack Joa. Describe your background and community involvement.
Well, thank you and hello. I want to start out by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. My name is Jack Joa, and I'm a resident of Champlin and have lived here the majority of my life. I grew up attending schools here in Champlin, and am a graduate of Champlin Park High School. I participated in football through CDAA, was a member of both the Champlin High School swimming team as well as the speech and debate teams. I have been an active participant and volunteer with the Boy Scouts where I attained the rank of Eagle Scout. However, my real passion is civil service. I graduated from the University of St. Thomas with a degree in Political Science and Justice and Peace Studies. I also was the vice president of Housing and the Legislative Affairs under there. I attended the Humphrey School of Public Affairs Public Service Institute. I have been an election judge for the city of Champlin since 2014, and currently am numerator with the U.S. Census Bureau serving Champlin. I am also an opioid project response coordinator with the state of Minnesota where I am working to solve the opioid epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Nate Trusdale, please describe your background and community involvement.
Sure, thank you, and I share with Jack's thanks for the League for putting this thing together. It's very important that we have these types of discussions during elections. So, I've been in the automotive industry for about 21 years, 16 of those have been in management, various roles. My wife and I moved to Champlin nearly 18 years ago, it'll be 18 years at the end of this month, with our then-four-year-old son, who is a 2016 Champlin Park graduate and recently started college after serving three and a half years active duty in the U.S. Army. We have two daughters, one is a seventh grader Jackson, the other is a freshman at Champlin Park starting this year. I was appointed to Champlin's Planning Commission in 2012, and while I thoroughly enjoyed that, I decided to run for this council seat in 2016, which is where I proudly served being sworn in, or after being sworn in on January of 2017. I'm also the appointed member from Champlin, serving on the Anoka-Champlin Fire Board, and I've recently taken over his chair.
And now you have an opportunity to follow up with a little more information about your qualifications for serving on the council and why you're seeking the office. Nate Trusdale.
Thank you. I'm seeking this office because I want to continue giving back to the community that has been so good to my family and me. I truly enjoy representing my neighbors, many of whom have become friends over the years. Most Champlin residents are happy and proud of their city, and while there's still work to do, and there always will be, overall Champlin is a great community. My intention is while we responsibly develop or redevelop, we keep the spirit of Champlin, Champlin. The current city council is aggressively tackling pavement issues that, and we've worked planned and budgeted to address the rapidly deteriorating streets. I'd like to see this plan through and get the residents the streets that they deserve. Mostly, I'm honored to be an advocate for the residents of Ward 3 and the Champlin as a whole. Staff and council relationships are strong, and we are in a great spot to do great things. Thank you.
Jack Joa, a little more on your qualifications for serving on Champlin City Council and why you're seeking the office.
Thank you. I'm running to give back to the community and ensure future generations fall in love with the city the way I have. Champlin is a wonderful city, and based on recent surveys of residents, most residents agree. However, there's always improvements that can be made. Our parks and trails are excellent, Champlin is a very safe city, and we have been making steps to protect the environment. We need to maintain these conditions in progress so that our city's future is bright. However, there are also improvements that need to be made, especially in street and road repairs, government transparency, and community involvement in government. I am running to be there for my constituents, specifically to understand their needs, concerns, and visions, advocate for them, and see them through from gold to reality.
Thank you. And Jack, a little more, what are your short and long-term goals for Champlin?
Well, I see a bright future for Champlin. I think we need to continue to have what we currently have while we'll see improvements to make of our community. Our city continues to rank as one of the best to raise a family, live, start business, and/or retire. One of the, Champlin is diverse economy, economic opportunities, great parks and trails, and a healthy environment and safe community. I hope to diversify the businesses to include more entertainment establishments, bars and restaurants, events, and cultural opportunities, especially along the Highway 169 corridor and the new Mississippi crossings redevelopment project. Another area where I would like to put forth my efforts is around mental health and addiction, especially around opioids. This is a serious issue affecting many in our community. I hope to work closely with local officials, law enforcement, and first responders to create a task force to look more closely into addiction and overdose, and help spread awareness for look at different ways the community can help.
Nate Trusdale, more about your short and long-term goals for Champlin.
All right, thank you. When I ran four years ago, I told you that Champlin's future is bright, and it was then and it is today. Many things have happened over the last four years, and I am proud to announce that Champlin is commencing construction of the Mississippi River crossings redevelopment project tomorrow, September 3rd. This project has been in working status for 20 years, four mayors, several city council members, several other committees of various different makeups, and when I spoke to the visionaries of this project's original intent, the goal is to gain meaningful access to the river for all of Champlin's residents. It is my belief that this project will do that. Champlin's future must also be one in which we remain a community where our residents feel safe to go out for a walk, and parents encourage their kids to go outside to play. I am committed to doing, to continue doing, what is needed to keep Champlin a safe community. Thank you.
Continuing on with you then Nate, the Census Bureau has estimated that Champlin is 17% diverse population at this time, and that number is expected to grow. Research shows that regions that attain more economic growth are those with greater racial inclusion and smaller racial income gaps. What are your thoughts on how Champlin can address its barriers to racial equity?
Well, I believe that Champlin is a growingly diverse community, and I embrace that, and I think that it's a beautiful thing to see. As far as the city addressing any racial disparities, I believe that our city staff is very fair when they go through the hiring process of everybody and try to include as much diversity as possible. So, that's kind of a short answer for a long question, but that's what I've got for you.
Thank you. Jack Joa, do you need the question read again?
No, that's, okay. From what I've seen out as a census numerator, I agree with the question that I have seen the city over the past couple of years becoming more and more diverse as we continue to grow. As Nate just said, I think the city has been doing a great job incorporating ways to keep the city diverse. We have to make sure that we continue to follow what we've been doing to, as we look at business licenses, city hiring, that we keep the idea of race and other qualities a factor that it shouldn't, sorry, come to, we should decide based on merit.
Thank you. A little more on how city government runs. Jack Joa, as a city council member, how would you ensure input from city residents and commissions?
That's a great question, and I think that involvement in city government is something that's really important. I think that, from what I've seen from recent city council meetings, even before the COVID crisis started, we've had very little input from city residents, and that's something I would like to help address. I think that we need to allow more speaking time at meetings to residents to help address in an open comment period, actually expand the number of commissions from the four that we currently have to address more issues, and people can spend more time and focus on certain issues instead of giving it to the full council, and then bring it to the full council later day, as well as spread just the knowledge of when meetings are happening and what the topics are going to be at those meetings.
Thank you. Nate Trusdale, as a city council member, how would you ensure input from city residents and commissions?
Sure, I appreciate that. So I sat on the Planning Commission for nearly four years, and I will tell you that I sit before every one of our council meetings and watch what they have to say, and it's the same for the Parks Board. They get the packet usually two weeks before the city council does, and they do a phenomenal job of vetting the work. They have a very diverse background, everybody up there has a different background, and they look at things from a different perspective than the next person over. So you oftentimes find a bunch of questions that I wouldn't have asked. I'm not an engineer, so I appreciate engineers serving on these commissions to help us make educated decisions. I think that the best way for us to communicate with residents is to go talk to them, so I talk to people all the time, and just try to get their input if we're making a decision. I'll ask my neighbors what their viewpoints are, what do they think? I always take the Ward 3 perspective first, and then the city second, and my own third, so that's my answer for that.
Thank you. Nate Trusdale, how would you handle a disagreement with city staff?
How would I, or how have I?
That's up to you.
I think that the best way to handle disagreements is to get everybody that's having a disagreement together in the same room and hash it out. I've done that, I will continue to do that. I have a great relationship with our staff, and I respect them, and they do a good job, and they work hard. So, there's a mutual respect between our city council, myself, and the city staff. So my best way is just to head off a disagreement right away, take care of it, move on, forget about it. Just forget about the problem, and let's just address the issue, and not the personal stuff.
Jack Joa, how would you handle a disagreement with city staff?
I agree with Nate that the issue or problem has to be resolved right away, and so we need to make sure that everyone feels like their voice is being heard revolving around that, and if that means getting them together, working out some type of compromise or solution, that is the best way to move forward.
Thank you. We're going to talk business a little bit in the next couple of questions. Jack Joa, please describe any experiences you have owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Well, thank you, and well, I haven't owned any businesses. I have had some supervisor experience, both when I was a student at the University of St. Thomas and working in certain levels of government, but I've always supported the rights of businesses and workers in those businesses, and I support that we need to continue to have our business community grow, and so that it can thrive and support the rest of the community.
Nate Trusdale, please describe your experiences owning or managing a business, as well as specific advocacy efforts on behalf of the local small business community.
Okay, so I have been in automotive, specifically automotive dealership management, for roughly 15 or 16 years. I currently oversee two departments, I'm the director of, I have 85 employees, four managers. So that's my business role, that's what I do outside of city hall and outside of my house. As far as advocacy for our businesses, I am very much a pro-business person within the city of Champlin. I advocate for our business quite frequently. There's some relief programs that we're working towards in light of all the COVID issues, and we're coming out with some programs to help some of these local businesses. It's been a very extremely tough year for a lot of the small businesses. You think about Champlin Athletic, or Hoodies Cafe, and all these places that were decimated financially by this, and they are of value to the city of Champlin, and they need to stay in Champlin, so I'm going to do my part for that.
Continuing on with that then Nate Trusdale, if elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate?
Well, I think that we need to offer business-friendly opportunities in the sense that if we can work with businesses to make adjustments to codes, or, you know, codes are important, and they're also not exactly right for every use. So sometimes there's a business that maybe wouldn't work really well in this area, but would work really well in this area, so let's talk to them, let's get them in contact with the owners of the property, and see if we can get them to maybe move their business over here. I think that we can, there's times where we can work on compromises, it's maybe not the city's council's job to decide how pretty a building needs to be. Of course, there's codes, and there's different things that need to be adhered to, but we don't need to worry about every little detail of a business. I think we kind of let the business owners run their business, and we just support them, so.
Thank you. Jack Joa, if elected, what would you do to provide a healthy business climate?
Well, I think a business climate is a very important thing. I think the city council has a lot of leeway in deciding what businesses would want to come to Champlin, what wouldn't, and that could mean providing certain incentives, and that to me does not mean financial incentives that could be working with the city code, as Nate just mentioned, or certain zoning. And I think that we need to offer businesses and workers that would want to come here, the business climate and amenities that they feel would bring in customers to be a supportive business. I also think that what Nate just mentioned, that the city is doing to help businesses through this climate of COVID, is very important to so that we can keep small businesses around.
Switching topics to youth. Jack Joa, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Champlin, and how would you, as an elected official, help solve the issue?
Well, I think Champlin is a very good city for most youth. We're in a very good situation for most teenage youth to be able to find jobs. We have law programs through community education and parks and rec for them to participate in, we have great parks and trail system, and so the biggest problem I see for youth probably isn't a problem at all. I think that we need to listen to the youth and work better with them, and that's probably the biggest problem, is that they don't feel heard.
Thank you. Nate Trusdale, what do you see as the greatest need or challenge for youth in Champlin, and how would you help solve that issue?
Thank you for that. So, one of the things that I am very proud of, and most residents of Champlin are very proud of, is our park system. We have some of the best parks in the state of Minnesota. In fact, my daughters are both teenagers, and they still go to Andrews Park just about every day to meet their friends, play tennis, whatever it is. So I agree with Jack, there's not a huge opportunity for need there. Believe me, if there was major problems with the youth, I'd hear about it every night when I got home from work, and they, my kids love it here, they're happy, they have great friends. There's lots of little stores and ice, you know, Cullen's Ice Cream, and they'll ride their bikes down there and have an ice cream cone with their friends, and it's just a fantastic community, I believe, for the youth. Maybe you could talk me into another sheet of ice at one of the parks in the winter, but past that, I think we do a pretty good job here.
Thank you. Now we're going to talk about buildings a little bit. Nate Trusdale, do you favor more affordable or more market rate apartments in Champlin?
Well, I think that that's pretty, that's been pretty evident. So we just signed, there's going to be 214 market rate apartments going in at the Mississippi River Crossing project. I believe that there's a good balance and a good mix between the two, but I would say if you gave me the option between the two, I'm going to probably pick market rate. I'd say that I'm no to affordable, I'm just saying my preference would be market rate.
Thank you. Jack Joa, do you favor more affordable or more market rate apartments in Champlin?
Well, Champlin is a city that we need to support residents throughout their life, from young families to middle age to those going into retirement, and each of those people are at different stages of their life and different financial need. I think there needs to be a careful balance between market rate and affordable housing, and I know when the Mississippi Crossing redevelopment first went through, there was some affordable housing there that was lost, and so I think that getting some of that back would be important, but also keeping a lot of the market rate.
Thank you. And Jack Joa, a little bit about some building that is actually going on right now, how should the council monitor the building out of Mississippi Crossings?
Well, I think that the idea of Mississippi Crossings, one that's been going on for a long time, has been really important. I think it's going to expand our opportunities for our community to market itself, our business opportunities, as well as residential. And so I think we have to, it's going both from an environmental standpoint as well as community growth, but I think right now the city is doing very well, good job keeping an eye on that.
Nate Trusdale, how should the council monitor the building out of Mississippi Crossings?
Yeah, it's been 20 years that it's been talked about, and there's a design in the next room over. I believe that the city council and staff has struck a really nice balance between business, so there's going to be restaurant-type amenity right on the river, docks for people to use to open to the public, public green space, there's going to be a public amphitheater, and there's going to be some form of a public building there, along with the market rate apartments. So we really took a lot of time and had, I don't even care to think of how many hours of discussions trying to get through this process, and having the five of us agree on something that we're actually very proud of. I think every one of us coming from very different backgrounds are very proud of what's going on. Managing the construction of it, that's just, that's something that we do all the time. Any construction project, the city helps manage, so I'm not super concerned about that.
Thank you. And Nate, cities respond to county, state, and federal directions regarding COVID-19. Are there other steps specific to Champlin that should be initiated?
I don't feel like I'm qualified to answer that. I think that we look to the CDC and MDH for guidance on that, and that's what our city has done, and they've done, they followed the governor's orders and everything, to a T, as you noticed when you walked in, and you have to take your temperature when you walk in the building. So, past what the CDC and MDH recommend, I don't, I'm not qualified to make any further recommendations.
Jack Joa, are there other steps specific to Champlin that should be initiated?
I agree with Nate. I don't feel like I am qualified to answer that, especially for Champlin specific. I think we need to follow the directions of our public health officials, including the Centers for Disease Control, the Minnesota Department of Health, and other local health department officials. Although I would say that I do think that includes making some actions before others, such as the CDC had recommended for a while to wear masks before the governor made a mandate, so maybe following the examples of cities like Minneapolis and mandating it on a local level first.
Thank you. Jack Joa, how would you address racism in Champlin?
I think that's a very tough question to answer. As we addressed a couple of minutes ago, the city is growing and thus becoming more and more diverse. I feel like we need to come together as a community to listen to everyone's voices and work out a solution that feels fair to everyone to help address any issues such as this. However, I'm going to say I don't feel like I have seen Champlin as a very, a city that experiences a lot of racism or any other types of problems. It's a very opening, open, and inclusive and welcoming city, and so we might have to see this as issues come up, but I don't, I think the city will do a very good job of addressing it.
Nate Trusdale, how would you address racism in Champlin?
How I would address racism in Champlin is I will say that Champlin, as we spoke of earlier, is growingly more diverse, probably by the week, and I think it's beautiful. So the way that I've addressed racism in Champlin is taught my children to be good people and treat everybody equitably. I do the same, I ask that of my kids, and I ask that of everybody in the city of Champlin. I don't know that there's a policy issue that Champlin could take up. To your point, I believe that's probably more of a state-type thing, I know it's fun for us just, you know, pass the buck, but I think that we teach our kids to be good people, and the problem will eventually take care of itself. That's what I believe.
We have one more question before your closing statements. Nate Trusdale, city council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
There's a lot. So, the city of Champlin, every so often, I couldn't tell you how often, but we go through a big strategic planning meeting, it's two days. Actually, last time it was held over at the Eastman Nature Center, where the city council works very hand-in-hand with staff, whether it be department, mostly department heads but with staff, to gain knowledge out of us of what we're looking for. And I'll tell you, I love this city so much that my initiative is pretty much to keep doing things the way that we have been. I love it here, and there's not a whole lot to change to me. So my strategy is mostly making sure our staff is trained, making sure we have proper levels of staff, and make sure that the plows are out on the streets when it snows. So that's kind of my, that's kind of my strategy for the city.
Thank you. Jack Joa, city council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
Well, I agree with Nate that I think that Champlin is a great city, and most residents seem to agree, about 90 to 95% think that, at least according to the last 2017 residents survey, that the city is doing a good or excellent job, and 95% would recommend Champlin to other residents. The biggest strategic initiatives I would push for is continuing the progress of the Mississippi River Crossings redevelopment, as well as more strategic planning around repair and maintenance of roads and streets, so that we don't have to do as many emergency complete rebuilds in more proactive measures.
And now your closing statements will begin with Jack Joa.
Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters again for having this forum tonight. I think it's important for voters to stay informed, and I just encourage everyone to get out and vote this election, whether that be by absentee, mail vote, or going to on Election Day. Thank you.
Nate Trusdale, your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you again for moderating this, Linda, and Jerry for the emails back and forth keeping us in the loop. I would also like to thank the residents of Ward 3 for trusting me these last four years to represent you at a city council level, and also I would like to thank our city staff for being very helpful and insightful when I have questions. Champlin's blessed with a staff that actually cares about doing a good job, and I believe that they are a group of wonderful people. Between my years on the Planning Commission and this term on the city council, I've learned a lot. With that, I know my experience, I know that I had the experience to help navigate our wonderful city through the next four years in my role in the city council. I've always operated and will continue to be a person of integrity. I don't lie, frankly, I don't have a good enough memory to, but I will always be honest with my residents, I always have been, even if I have to deliver disappointing news. So with that, I'd like to thank you all for watching, whoever's watching at home, and the League again, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd.
Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues and for running for Champlin City Council Ward 3. One more shout-out to our cosponsors. A big thanks to Champlin Women of Today, Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and the North Suburban Optimists Club. And thanks, viewers, for your interest in becoming informed voters. You'll find links to all the Meet the Candidate forums in the LWV ABC website as we move through the election season, they'll be posted, as well as QCTV's website. You have many options to vote this year. You can request an absentee ballot now on the Secretary of State's website, MNvotes.org, or you can go to the ICE Arena to vote anytime in person after September 18th. If you need to register to vote or update your registration, you can do that online or when you go to vote. Make your voice heard in the general election by voting on or before November 3rd. Thank you, stay healthy and safe. Thank you, stay healthy and safe.